Hey Crash, can you give us a thumbs up? Can you hear us? Crash, Crash, thumbs up on the video. Crash, can you hear us? Thumbs up on the video. Or David, can you unmute yourself? I think I made you a co-host.
Yeah, I can hear you.
He can, he can hear us.
Alright, it is 6:03 PM on June 26, 2025. Now we'll bring this meeting of the Dunsmere City Council into order. Everyone could please stand. That will move into roll call.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present.
Councilmember Lucchese.
Present.
Councilmember Brian.
Present.
Vice Mayor Seaver.
Present.
Mayor Farnow.
Here.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to item number three, special presentations and announcements, which we do have one today, on the Union Pacific Rail Yard Cleanup 2025 Work Plan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmember, members of the community. Peggy Egbohai with Union Pacific Railroad. I am the Senior Director of Public Affairs. And we're here to give a presentation on the Dunsmere Shoreline Restoration Project. And we have a few slides that we will be bringing up to share, to go through. And I'm here with Unified Command. We have EPA, we have Department of Fish and Wildlife, we have Water Board. So we're prepared to answer any questions that you have as we near the end of the restoration project along the shoreline. Okay. My favorite color is blue. While I'm stalling, we did bring, and this, this will be one of my slides, so sneak peek. Public engagement information. We will be having an open house so that if there's any questions that follow the presentation today, or things that, you know, come to mind afterwards. We have some flyers that we can leave here in council chambers. And we will be posting also notices, et cetera. I'll get to that slide here soon. So you can go to the next slide, or I can do that myself. We have a bit of history here in the great city of Dunsmere in the 19th century. As we built the tracks to come across the continent. And we had many different communities that we brought up as we built our machine shops, our turntables to work on our locomotives and deliver cargo and passengers. Oh. So what you can see here is the Shoreline Response Action Progress 2025 update. In the green, you will see all the work that we've been doing. And, and we thank the community and council for your patience with us as we're going through this, this very in-depth, complicated technical process of restoring the shoreline. So you can see that we've done 1,600 feet of shoreline in, in the green. And you can see the response area all the way on the far right-hand side of the screen is a, the remaining portion. So we're really excited to get to this point. We also have a timeline here. These slides, as information will be present at the open house that we will be hosting next month. But you can see the 1,600 feet of Sacramento River Shoreline that has been restored from 2021 through last year. And the amount of impacted soil and debris that was removed in 2021. As, as the years go by, you can see the pictures and the progress of the shoreline restoration. It looks really good out there. We did host a, a site walk earlier today. But we're happy to host additional sidewalks at councils availability or convenience. If, if you'd like to come out there, just let me know. This year in 2025, we are estimating that we will remove the final 6,500 tons of impacted soil. There will be some in-water work. Material removals that includes some of these mattresses that have been acting as some absorbent. I'm not an expert, so I brought all the experts here for, for any questions on that. And we will be demobilizing from the site at the end of the year. That is the goal. That is the plan. Wish us luck. We're, we're going to get there. We're, we're confident. It's, it's, we're starting about the same time we did last year. So we don't see any issue with that because you can see what we did last year was the bulk of the restoration project. And then you will see that the monitor arrow, we're not demo being and leaving forever and ever. You know, we're still going to be here. We're still going to be monitoring the site. I think my next slide is the community engagement slide, which will come up shortly because I did click it. And it will show again, the flyers that we have, we will be leaving some here. But we will be going door to door, delivering these so that we get as much information out to the public as possible. And hosting the, the second open house for the restoration project, July 16, at the Community Building on Dunsmere Avenue. We also will be installing more public notices with, with some information with updates that will be installed as we start work. Work will start basically following the July 4th holiday or on July 4th. So you can see the public notice signs that will be posted physically along the shoreline as well as the flyers. That's the second middle. And then towards the right, you know, really where we don't want people entering into the river. And these are all the same notices that we had in 2024. I love this picture because this is what it's going to look like. For more information, we have some links. We have the QR codes and of course, my phone number. Always happy to take any phone calls. You can email me too, but most people like to give me a call. So with that, do you have any questions?
I had the opportunity to go on the site visit. I was very grateful for the answering a lot of my questions there. Thank you, everyone, for the work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, and with that, we'll move on to public comment. Unless there was any other presentations for anyone. Nope, okay. We'll move on to public comment. This is a time for members of the general public to address the city council on any manners pertaining to city business. Everyone will have, or anyone who chooses to speak will have three minutes. I will give a 30-second warning when your time is almost up. We'll do individuals in the room first who wish to speak, followed by individuals on Zoom. Please state your name and address for the record. And with that, I will open up public comment. Oh, and if you do have, if you do have a comment relating to something that is on either new business or old business, please save your public comment till that time as there will be dedicated public comment for those particular items.
Get over here. I'm the Dunsmere Library Manager, 714, thank you, Dunsmere Avenue. And I'm here tonight to talk about the importance of our public library. Our funding is up for review and we're hoping that the city council will vote to give us the funding that we need. So this just is about, a little bit about the library. We're a trusted space at the heart of the community. It provides a welcoming, inclusive, and supportive environment. And it contains resources and services that support lifelong learning. Dunsmere Library is open Tuesday through Saturday from 1:00 to 5:00 and serves an average of 4,100 people annually. In addition to 400 children at our storytime and playgroup annually. We actually had over 20 kids at our summer reading program this year in the Resource Center Garden. So we're a community hub, providing local information like city council meetings, Chamber of Commerce info, school events and so forth via handouts and word of mouth happenings. We post everything on the door and our bulletin board that we can. Additionally, we are an official cooling and heating center and offer free public computers, printing, copying, faxing, and scanning. There is a free literacy program with an assigned tutor available. And we also offer a monthly book club, a family-friendly movie and game day, a 3D printer, a summer reading program, special free events, and author talks, poetry readings, and local history presentations. We have an in-house bookstore with gently used books, DVDs, and audiobooks as well for very reasonable prices. And an online, the online bookstore also helps us with our funding. There are also many historical documents like yearbooks, scrapbooks, and photo albums. We just recently obtained files on every person that is buried in the Dunsmere Cemetery, including veterans. Which seems to be really popular for a lot of our out-of-town guests. Three minutes?
30 seconds.
30 seconds. Okay. So whether you need a book, a computer to browse, look for employment or resume assistance, or just a place to relax and escape the rivers of the world. The library is a welcoming, safe haven, free of discrimination, and open to all.
Thank you.
I'm Helen Cartwright, 4,200 Pinewood Drive. So I was just thinking about having this young council. And I'd like it. I think it's really nice to have five people who are more concerned about the future than the past. And who are firing on all cylinders. But there is a strange dynamic I've never seen before, which is the degree of unresponsiveness towards constituents. Maybe it's because you live your life more on screens than in the past. Just thinking back, Big Dave and Bruce Deutsch. Big Dave would jump up 24 hours a day to help a constituent. Bruce Deutsch, I may be emailed eight times in eight years. And every time I got back a detailed, thoughtful, long response answering my questions. And it's really a gracious, polite, respectful way to treat people rather than being ghosted. Like is what I feel is going on now. So a month ago, I sent all of you guys, some of you twice, another email that said, Dear Michael and Sarah, that's who I sent it to, to begin with. Now that we're going into the hot weather season, can you remind the city manager to inspect the underground course of the creek? And determine if it is safe to turn the water back on? There's a lot of vegetation and other forms of life that have relied on that water for 100 years. Thank you, Helen Cartwright. So I've heard back nothing. I hope from my little lecture up here tonight, I will hear back something from someone, maybe from everyone. That would be just a wonderful feeling. And I think that's the way you ought to treat your constituents. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Can everybody hear me okay? Alex Brendel, still live in Dunsmere. The council members, I've put on your desk photographs of the roof of the bottling plant in Dunsmere. I read in the agenda that there's a need for a new roof on the bottling plant. And I'm not against a new roof on the bottling plant. I'm just in favor of the best use, setting the highest priorities possible for Dunsmere's taxpayer money. I have some very extensive knowledge of the roof at the bottling plant. And I just want to say that I think the library is a much higher priority for the, the money that the citizens pay in Dunsmere, the year-round citizens. Why? Well, the Dunsmere Library is open from 1:00 to 5:00 PM, four hours a day, five days a week. That's 20 hours. And there's two employees there. So that makes the total of two workers, librarian and an assistant, who are getting paid out of this money that you're allocating in the budget. And so two people. That's, that's a total of, sorry, my math co-processor doesn't work it too well. Forty hours a week to, to get paid two people who are working 40 hours a week, only $25,000, seems a bit, a bit low. The cost of living today is steep. And there's a lot of citizens who live year-round in Dunsmere who can't afford to pay for the heating of their own home in the wintertime. And they go to the library to stay warm in the wintertime. I'm talking disadvantaged youth. I'm talking elderly. These are people who use the library, the public library, as a place to stay warm in the winter. So personally, this is my value. I think the roof would be a good thing to fix, but I think it's a lower priority than spending more money on maintaining the library roof. I think the library should be budgeted for $50,000 per year to pay two people year-round jobs. Thank you.
Thank you.
White Bailey, 5906 Castle Avenue. I was going to speak on that tonight because I did notice again that the agenda was not processed 72 hours in advance. I realize this is a special meeting and you only have to do it 24 hours in advance. But I wish we could get it together and actually put the agenda in 72 hours in advance. This is a rescheduled meeting and I think it would have been easier to do. But what I want to speak on, I met this lady's guests the other day. The guests that have been staying her, her Airbnb for a number of years. They went down and they were going through the train depot and watching the museum down there. They explained that they were staying in McLeod, that after being, not having the creek there, going through her property, that staying there for many, many years, they chose not only to not stay there, they chose not even to stay in Dunsmere, but to come and events in Dunsmere to participate by buying an Airbnb in McLeod. So it is a factor. I just want to reiterate that because it come up. That's what we're trying to promote is people that have come here and stay here. And I think that would help.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, mayor and city staff. My name is Alan Magagna, 4116 Pine Street and 59 Sacramento Avenue. I'm the owner and operator of Gates of Lumer LLC, doing business at Al's Depot and Emporium. Our locally licensed cannabis dispensary located in the historic downtown district of Dunsmere. I'm here tonight to respectfully follow up and ask whether the council has been able to move forward in any capacity on the matter of onsite cannabis consumption. As many of you know, I've submitted a detailed proposal in the last couple of months that outlines a fully compliant and community-conscious cannabis consumption lounge within our current premises. This isn't just a business expansion. This is a carefully designed public benefit. Our vision is to provide a safe, inviting, fully compliant space for adult cannabis use, users modeled on successful programs like West Hollywood's. We've accounted for public safety, odor control, customer education, staff training, and neighborhood impact. It's a forward-thinking model built to serve both local residents and our visitors while respecting the integrity of our town. And to clarify any lingering questions about whether this is, is even possible at the state level, I've received a direct confirmation, confirmation from the Department of California's Cannabis Control. And an email dated April 9th, which is in your guys' packets. The Licensing Division confirmed that onsite consumption lounges are indeed allowed under state law, providing local jurisdiction allows it. Specifically, they reference CCR Title IV, Division 19, Section 15407B, which permits licensed retailers like myself to operate a consumption area on the licensed premises in accordance with the Business Profession Code 26200G, with the requirements simply being that local jurisdiction authorizes it. In fact, the city of Dunsmere's own ordinance, CC558, already anticipates this, stating that onsite consumptions of cannabis is prohibited without prior written approval from the city. That means that council already has the power to move this forward simply by providing that written approval or initiating the process of drafting an ordinance to formalize it, which is what I showed at the March 20th meeting a couple of months back. Let me be clear, I am willing to go above and beyond to ensure that this is done the right way. That means fully, that means fully cooperating with the city staff on wavering commitment to community safety and education, strict compliance with all applicable laws. So tonight, I respectfully ask, has council had any chance to review this matter? Are there any updates, feedback, or steps I can assist to, to help move this discussion forward? Thank you again for your time, your dedication, and your service to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Kalen Diasus at 6101 Dunsmere Avenue. Good evening, mayor and city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I live here in Dunsmere and I'm proudly raising my family here. I work as a real estate agent and have spent the past year working very hard to help sell the Fixer Hotel just off the freeway. The one formerly known as the Best Choice Inn, but known to us all who remember it as the House of Glass. This property is not just another listing to me. I see it as a key opportunity to bring life and revenue back into our town. It has been sitting vacant and boarded up for years. Like many in our community, I'd love to see something better happen with it. And I've invested time, money, and heart into making that possible. And not just for the seller, but for the benefit of our whole town. We recently had a serious qualified buyer come forward. He already owns and operates a successful hospitality business nearby with high ratings and years of experience. He was ready to invest in the property, bring it up to code, and reopen it as a working business, creating local jobs, boosting our tax base, and solving a longstanding blight issue. When he contacted the city to do his due diligence, he hit wall after wall. He was told there were hundreds of violations on the property, but couldn't get a single piece of documentation. He called, he emailed, he visited City Hall twice. He was sent to multiple different contacts, left voicemails, and ultimately never received a written response or a callback. I read the messages he sent. They were polite, respectful, and genuinely collaborative. Eventually, he walked away. His last note to me said, "It is clear this is a city that does not want us here." That broke my heart, both as a professional trying to do right by my client and as a That broke my heart, both as a professional trying to do right by my client and as a neighbor who wants to see this town thrive. And now I'm left wondering, is this going to happen again? Will I continue putting in hours of work and hope only to have a serious buyer walk away discouraged? Not by the property, but how they've been treated? What exactly is going on behind the scenes that's creating this disconnect? And I'm here not to stir trouble or blame anyone, and I truly mean that. I know things get busy. And I respect how much work it takes to run a city. I know everyone here wants best for Dunsmere and I just want to understand what happened here and how can we do better? Thank you. Specifically, I'd like to respectfully ask, can the city provide documentation of any reported violations? Was the current owner ever formally notified in writing? And moving forward, can we establish a clear and more consistent system for providing information to good, good faith, serious buyers? We all want Dunsmere to succeed, I truly believe that. And I believe this hotel can be part of that success if we're willing to work together. I view everyone here as my teammates and making this happen. Thank you for your time and concerning, addressing these concerns.
Is there anyone else for public?
Hello, my name is Quinton Gaddy. I'm the director of the Chasta Cascade Small Business Development Center. I just wanted to make an announcement for the public that we will be hosting office hours at the Dunsmere Chamber tomorrow from 10:00 to 3:00. I do have an appointment first thing in the morning with a contractor. I'm going to help restructure as a mess corporation. I have met with clients there, I've helped them buy businesses, help people just get their permits, apply for things like encroachment permits from the city. And so this is a, this is a no-cost service for anyone who wants to become a small business owner or is currently a small business owner in Dunsmere or in South Siskiyou. So we'll be there Dunsmere Chamber 10:00 to 3:00 tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heat closer, 4403 Oak Street. I am the director of the chamber and I just want to volunteer my services to help with these communication problems. Please, I would love to like just be a part of this and figure this out. I think this is ridiculous. Just please reach out to me, let's work this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought notes because I haven't been feeling well. Alan Bloder, 4409 Oak Street. I echo respectfully that we're not very responsive as a city. We've experienced it over and over again. And also had somebody that wanted to buy a building here who didn't get responsive. Quick response, but also search our Facebook. Now Ted talked to Mark about how our reputation on Facebook impacts people's desire to invest time here. So we actually do have to care what's on social media. He was like, "I don't care." And I was like, "You need to care because people are deciding whether or not to invest here." But besides that, I want to let you guys know that tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. Siskiyou Arts Museum will be signing for the purchase of our building. You know, my heart in that is downtown revitalization and Siskiyou Arts Museum is one of those things. It's a gem in our downtown. So we're excited about that. We've raised 190,000 of the 200 needed to buy the building. However, we need a roof right away and we bought the building as is. Thank you, Peter, great deal. But we need to raise another 50 grand. And so I'm looking forward to continuing on the process for the rest of the year to be able to put a roof on it, to trim the trees between the buildings. You've probably in the Sumax that grow to the sky, they're basically weed trees. And so we need to take those out as well. Thank you Dennis for taking care of the tree out front. Kudos to you for your responsiveness there because we needed that taken care of to get the new roof. So thank you guys so much for that. I wanted to touch down quickly on the library. How much time do I have left?
One minute and 24 seconds.
I can do it. I worked on the finance team, we've budgeted 25,000. Tim has come forward and said, "We really need 31." I just want to let you guys know, if there's an ambiguous relationship with a library, do you want it open? The friends of the library want it open? Who wants it open and for how much time? Right now, the friends of the library are operating it and having to do all the fundraising for it and the city's kicking in. If it closes, is that the friends of the libraries problem? Or is it the city's problem? So that's what I would like to encourage us to do over the next year is establish what that relationship looks like for the long term, maybe retooled or re-whatevered. But right now, what they're going to be looking at is they're $6,000 short, which is about six weeks of operation. And so we need to make the decision, do we want them to be able to continue to operate 20 hours a week? 52 weeks a year? Or do we want to let them go ahead and pull back on their hours? That's what I got for you. Thank you guys so much.
Tim Holt, 6235 Hill Street. This, I hesitate to address you right now because this may come up during your budget discussion, I think a little later. But I just want to mention briefly adding to what Alan said that, yeah, if we, if, this is not a joke, if the library does not receive some funds fairly soon from the city, we are looking at at least a temporary closure of the library starting in the middle of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? If you would like to make a public comment on Zoom, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. All right, and with that, we will move on to. All right. They were, we'll let them. Yeah. There you go. You're unmuted, you're unmuted. We'll go ahead and let you do the three minutes.
Thank you.
Um, can you hear me?
We can.
Great. My name is Stephen Viegas and this is my wife, Caitlin Viegas. And we purchased the House of Glass Motel in the fall of 20 COVID time. And we got two years into the project and had some issues, family issues. In that next year, we found ourselves going to the city and just to discuss the, the water, the utility payment structure. And we wanted to discuss applicant permits and applications and and the building inspector, we thought was very unrealistic was what he was telling us. At one point, after Dustin Reeve took, took the helm, I found that there was zero reply to any of my questions about permits or applications or the billings. No one would talk to us, no one at all would talk to us. I would go in physically to the City Hall, I would call from the face page of the Dunsmere City Hall website. I would call singular departments, Dennis, Manya, Wendy, trying to get through to Dustin to schedule an appointment so that we could talk about what could be the future and what was happening with the, with the House of Glass Motel. Ultimately, we decided to sell it from non-compliance from the city. And now that we've had buyers fully interested, they're telling me that they can't get access to the file. They say there is no file, the city doesn't know where the file is. They say that there's several violations that the, the city staff is telling them it's got several violations existing. And I, that's not true. I don't know of a single one. I'm curious what's going on. I think there's something more at play. It's, it looks very suspicious. Anyways, we lost one or two good buyers because of the, the buyer being ghosted at the city level. Coming in, calling, the same thing I was, I failed at doing while I was there. So we are hoping that you guys can figure something out and work with us to get you a good, a good tenant, a good person to move into that, that space. We wish the best for Dunsmere. And that's what I'd like to share with y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment for this evening. All right, and with that, we'll move on to council and staff comments. The sheriff, oh, yep. For that, the sheriff is not here this evening, so we'll move on to the city manager.
Hopefully this stays on.
And if we could have some silence in the audience, please.
All right. Mayor and council, over the last few weeks, I guess it's been three weeks since we had a meeting. Staff has been taking the opportunity to take some vacation time. So we were out and closed last week. Other than that, we've been working on budget, doing a sub, quite a bit of planning work. And she had a conflict, so she couldn't make it tonight. We had a good softball tournament and, and really good attendance for the softball, if you attended. And then I've been doing some work with economic development and hotels specifically. And that site has come up just to kind of address the comments there associated with the House of Glass. And they are correct, the file is missing and I have no records. So I don't, we are, we are still in the process of looking and, but we have scoured everything we have. Additionally, we have the sewer project, which I believe either late next week or the week af, beginning of the week after, will be moving into downtown. So we'll have some traffic impacts in downtown. As soon as we have the official date, we'll provide a timeline on where and what. But that traffic will be impacted from Angler, Angler Lodge down to basically the brewery. And they'll be working from the north to the south in sewer, doing the sewer work there. The surprise Peggy didn't announce it, but the sewer, the derailment cleanup has completed and we, we went on site today. We did a, an assessment, we do have, we do have some damaged stuff that we are going to be working with UP on to get corrected. Now that all of the materials are out of the way. And then other than that, just doing a lot of vegetation work and, and staff. And we've got some cycled through vacations coming up over the next couple of weeks.
We do have a couple of questions, but if anyone else wants to go first, feel free.
Question for city manager. Could you maybe comment on the planning process for updating the cannabis ordinance? I know that's with staff being worked on.
Yes, it's, it's on our list. I believe we'll be getting started here in the next month or so.
So is it being worked on by our, our planner?
No, she's, we had some other stuff that was prioritized before that. And so, but it is on, it is on the list. We, we kind of dumped, we dumped a year's worth of work on her in about 60 days. So she's trying to work through those.
Could you provide us an update when it's going to near the process where public input is involved?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then the question I had, well, I had two questions, but one was asked. So the other question I had was, it's too bad Helen left. I know the last time we talked to you and said we're waiting for the creek to dry out because that was necessary to get the equipment under there to look at it. Is there still any water flowing through there? Has it dried out?
I wanted to sneak down there today when I was at the rail yard, but I, we will look on that end here in the next week. And then now we're getting close to summertime flows, so the expectation that it would be dry. And with Union Pacific's work and what they're doing in this upcoming year, they're going to be working in that area and removing some of that shoreline. So we, we're gonna, I'm gonna work with them to do some coordination so we can get in there and, and do the work from the bottom end and, and, and look at that. But yes, that's, it was a discussion we had here last week. Now that the flows are down, we're gonna look at getting a, getting an understanding of what it's going to cost us to just take a look at it and see. And with them already doing work there, then there's some opportunity to get in there a little easier too.
All right, I'll move on to council comments. Council member ever. Comments?
And no comments.
Council member Ryan.
I want to say something about the perception and sometimes reality that we're non-responsive. I'm very grateful people showed up and shared their experience, particularly when it comes to revitalization. I personally know how hard it is to sell an old decrepit building that's important to the town. It doesn't get any easier if we don't have clear answers or if we don't have answers. We don't have a timeline for how we can work together to solve it. I'm strongly supportive of us prioritizing particularly the, I think there are eight or so projects in our downtown, our own downtown revitalization plan calls out that particular property and a number of others. I view those as very high priority because if, if they get successfully redeveloped, they're going to give a lot of bonuses and additional economic and community gain to the entire society here. So, you know, I'm not trying to beat a horse on it, but I view those as the highest priority. I know Cosmont is still being retained through that grant for the next year to work on precisely these issues. Not so much the building inspection side. I know we have a new building inspector and so we're going to get some fresh eyes on it, period. But I'd be, you know, unless staff says they're going to work on it in a timely manner, I'd almost want to see an update at the next council meeting to make sure we don't let this slip away if we're part of the problem.
Really quick through the chair, I did want to ask, we are supposed to host Lola this month and we have not told anyone when it is or where it is or what's going on. So if.
Flyers coming tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, if you guys need any help, just let me know. I'm happy to, you know, help find speakers or help arrange catering. I know it usually gets, it's all good. Okay. Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, I know sometimes it's really hard. We don't put on staff and that's very unfair because it's usually an elected member who volunteers our staff to do it. So if you guys do need help with anything, just let me know.
I would just like to echo Congressman Bryant's sentiments that getting projects completed like the House of Glass needs to be the priority and the city can't be the reason that a good developer falls through. With that though, if there is, I would also like to see a little update on that meeting or two. The main, the main thing I have for today though, is with the Fourth of July coming up, make sure everyone is fire safe. Just a reminder here, that fireworks are not allowed within city limits. Please go up to Mount Chassa and enjoy that.
It's going to be hosting Freedom Fest where you can go light your own fireworks off. So if you would like to light fireworks, please go to Monique and do not do that here.
They have fire, they have fire personnel on staff ready to put out any fires, just like they started last year.
Please, we've already had five fires.
They have, they have volunteered as tribute, so we'll respect that, that volunteerism.
Right. All right, and with that, we'll move on to committee reports, which I know we do have a finance committee report.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's more appropriate to weigh in. Finance committee did meet, but to weigh in when the item comes up for the budget extension, we discussed the budget. It's, it's coming along. Do you, well, do you want to do it now or when we?
We'll do it, we'll do it at the item. Yeah. Finance committee did meet and there is an item pertaining to that meeting later on the agenda. Any other committees? All right, with that, we will move on to the approval of the minutes for June 5th, 2025.
Motion to approve June 5th, 2025, city council meeting minutes for the regular meeting, I believe.
Yes.
All second.
All right, has been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which consists of two items, the check register for 531, 25 through 620, 2025, and consider acceptance of the quitclaim deed Vermont Airport Maintenance Yard property and approve resolution 2025-11.
Motion to adopt consent agenda items 8A and B.
All second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
We do.
Community
Hold on, that probably should have been a roll call. We spent money.
Oh, because it's a quick claim. Sorry, we're spending money.
All right, good catch.
According to data, it's different than
Right, but, but we're authorized in me to spend $63,000 for the
The quick claim.
All right, roll call vote.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Aye.
Councilmember Lukeye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Not an official motion.
Chatting over there.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
Aye.
Mayor Carne.
Aye.
Beautiful.
Cool.
All right, with that, we'll move on to the public hearing. Right, city manager Reese.
One second, I lost my page. Okay, there we are. All right, page 26. All right, so mayor and council, tonight's public hearing is, is associated with the application for funding for C D B G block grant. And I, and we have Brandy here to speak on that, so.
Thank you. I'm Brandy Caparasso, community Sorry, okay. Brandy, community development manager with Great Northern Services. I'm going to be assisting the city with the two applications. And hopefully, if they're approved, then go ahead and help implement them. We actually are holding, we held a public meeting on June 4th at the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. Alicia, my coworker, headed that for individuals attended. One individual participated via phone. The reason we're doing two this time is because on the 2024 application, you received more points if you held more than one public meeting and public hearing. And if the public meeting was not at a government facility during a city council meeting or public, public hearing. Um, the community members and local property owners express strong support for the Dunsmere Community Resource Center to have the opportunity to purchase the properties they currently occupy. They include two separate buildings with one building also including a community garden. It also was noted that there were two different landlords and that they, both buildings are currently for sale. The attendees discussed the possibility of using the C D B G loan to assist funding. And one attendee stated preference for allocating funding to support the resource center rather than using funding for housing rehabilitation. So we didn't make any comments, but I thought I should read those to you so that you would have those for your notes. And then I also did give the, the notes to staff. In all that, I wanted to clarify that neighborhood, we would probably consider that a neighborhood facility. And you can, acquisition isn't allowable project under C D B G. I don't know if the city would have to do that acquisition or if it could be through a nonprofit, whether it would be a loan or a grant. I would have, if the city would, in the future, would like to pursue that, I can find out more information about that. However, this public hearing, not only to go over what planning I'm applying for, is also to hear other public comments about what they would like to see for C D B G funding. The, the NOFA, the Notice of Funding Availability is expected to be released in the summer of 2025. Like I said, this is the public's opportunity to comment on what projects or programs they would like Dunsmere to apply for. What I'm going to be presenting today is the availability of funding and the application information. And it is in draft form because this, this information is taken from the Housing and Community Development State of California 2025-2029 Federal Consolidated Plan. The final requirements for submitting the 2025 C D B, C D B G application will be published in the 2025 C D B G. What I'm telling you here is probably what's going to happen, but it may change. All applications will be scored on a competitive basis this year. The criteria will focus on need readiness, capacity, and past performance. And that's where we lost out on one of the last ones is that there was still an open grant that didn't meet the requirements of, to participate in that, one of the grants that was submitted. Grantees who have not been awarded recently will be prioritized. Total applications for planning and public services shall not exceed one for each jurisdiction. Total applications for economic or rehabilitation shall be one. Total applications for infrastructure, public facility improvement, or projects shall be one. The total estimate, and then the total applications you can submit three, one for planning or public services, one for economic development or housing rehab, and then one for infrastructure, public facilities, and improvement projects. So that's, that's that. It's expected to be about $34 million in available funds total for the state. That could change, but that's what they're expecting, about the same as last year. The funding limits for the, for the jurisdiction will be for three applications or for one total application, depending how you want to do that, is 3.6 million. Planning and public services is 300,000. Project applications, 3.3 million in program. So that projects are the public, public works projects. And the program applications, which is the economic development or housing rehab, is 1.5 million. The application acceptance will be outlined in the NOFA and maybe, actually, it's going to be, we had an update before, after this was typed, that it's actually going to be, the NOFA is going to open. There's going to be 60 days where the jurisdiction is allowed to review the, review the NOFA. And then there's, will be 60 days to submit the application. So it's not going to be on a first come, first served, like it was last year on some of the applications. And we're going to be assisting the city and staff with submitting that application. Since they're pretty much the same as last year, it shouldn't take too much time and too much effort to get that done. This is the biggest push, and then I'll be back here for the resolution. So the two applications that are planned to be submitted is for engineering plans and environmental assessment for the proposed storm drain master plan and the planning for, or the planning for Mossbury Springs. But I think we're still doing the storm master, storm drain master plan. The total request will be 300,000. Pace, the city engineer, will design the storm drain project. Environmental assessment work will be procured and we'll be doing the grant administration and any support that Pace needs in that, in that process. The program application for housing rehabilitation for homes located in the city of Dunsmere will be submitted, and that total request will be for 545,000. We'll perform the outreach, client assistance with the applications, and approval through the Dunsmere Loan Committee. Once the app, those applications are approved, Great Northern will assist the homeowner with procuring a licensed contractor and assist with the rehabilitation projects. And the rehabilitation projects, the assistance to the homeowner can be for low interest rate loans, forgivable loans or grants. So we'll help develop those. I think we have a set of guidelines, but I imagine I think we need to come back and take a look at those. We did just get an update for the 2025 C D B G income permits. And I'll just do, for a household of one, that's $52,600, and for a household of four, that's $75,100.
Just really quick, so it's that or lower if you're considered?
Correct, it's that amount or lower.
Yeah, thank you.
Not, you don't have to be at that.
Thank you.
You just can't be over that. So any questions from council or from?
We will open it up to public comment in just one second. I'll let you come back around and answer any questions that the public make during the public comment. So with that, any questions before I go to public comment?
Thank you.
Nope. All right, thank you. And with that, we will open this up to public comments. Three minutes, 30 second warning. Please limit any comment to this particular item.
Yes, just a question really. So in, in looking for funds for the library, typically grants and so forth, we find it almost impossible to find grant money for operating expenses for nonprofits. So my question is, you're shaking your head no. So you're saying no operating expenses either from you. Okay, you answered my question.
I was the sole attendee at the June 4th meeting. It was Denise, our host and your friend. I thought there'd be more people there, but it wasn't very well advertised. Because I think it probably fills a check, check the box.
If we could have quiet in the room, please.
Yeah, so I think it was a check the box kind of event. But at that event I brought up, can we use that money to secure the community resource there? Looking at the, how many, $545,000 to do housing improvements? We were like, how many houses did we do for that? What's the community impact? It's a loan program, so the city gets the money back versus helping the Community Resource Center buy their building and property and having that be a loan. And I think the community impact of loaning the Community Resource Center or whoever the agency is, their money to secure that property probably has more community impact than fixing up a few houses. My two cents, but I don't know if that fits the plan.
Thank you.
I'm Alex, still living in Dunsmere. I'd like to just clarify for other people that might be listening in. You guys just voted to spend $63,000 to buy some land and forgot to do a roll call vote on spending $63,000. Now, the city owns land around the Mont Airport already. It's kind of underutilized. Again, I'm just asking you to think about priorities here in Dunsmere. $63,000, that's cheap for a chunk of land that big. And it was probably a good thing to buy, but you just spent $63,000 and there's only $25,000, to my understanding, I could be wrong, in the budget to pay two librarians and do, and all the benefits that the library provides to the citizens of Dunsmere. I think you really got to consider your priorities. What, what's going on with the priorities for funding using public dollars? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there any further public comment on this item? If you are on Zoom and would like to make a comment, please go to the React tab and raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close public comment on this item. Correct me if I'm wrong, I just want to make sure that this is clarified here. And one reason that I'm thinking of, I think, that the re, or this particular housing one is going for its people who are in code enforcement, correct?
Yeah, well, that's, that's one aspect of, of it, yes, is to get some of the, you know, less compliant homes into compliance.
So one thing I wanted to specify housing route, I do love the idea of also potentially using a bunch of this to be a resource. The reason the reason that particular housing or the, that housing tract was picked is that it's money available if someone gets caught up in code enforcement to make sure that getting in code enforcement actions against them doesn't cause them to eventually lose their house. It's a pool of money that, and someone who doesn't have that much money, who has issues wrong with their house that are a major code violation, that they can fix it instead of getting caught up in fines and court and receivership and losing their house. And so that was one reason why we, as the city council, since code enforcement has been, you know, happening in the city, we wanted to make sure that there was an off track for people who didn't have the money to necessarily fix these problems without becoming homeless or losing a family home or something.
Yeah, I may have missed, I think that's a very small aspect that was kind of brought up as a beautiful kind of way to help people who are caught up in that, that aspect. But this item actually has been really something the city's been interested in doing since I've been on council. Councilman Lukeye can affirm that. But we, we had a program that helped a lot of our low-income seniors do energy upgrades, but, but more re-roofs, really vital things where if the roof doesn't get fixed, a lot more things will go wrong in the house. And we had it, I think, for a number of years, maybe a good decade or so. And I think it expired in 2014 or 15. And so we really wanted to bring that back because it's been a missing piece for our community.
Great Northern Services used to actually have a weatherization program that helped with a lot of facilities. And I believe that was grant associated and that grant ended. And so G N S doesn't offer that program anymore. So this is a very similar program to that. But if you're done, and there is one aspect that I'd like to point out with this.
Might be the same one I am. The, the loan
P I income.
Okay, we can do that. But the, depending on the applicant's financial, you know, economic position, the loan may be forgivable depending on how the program rolls out. So don't think it's just, hey, here's a loan, like going to a bank, paying 10% interest or something like that. These are very, very good terms with, I think the program hasn't been fully established yet. But the intention is to make this the easiest possible way for people to fix their homes, including potentially if they qualify based on income, forgivable eventually, so.
And one, so the last time, I believe we are currently in like the last two years of the, of those assessments associated with people who did this the last time. So I mean, we're, we're at the end of a 20-year cycle. So that was the last time we did a rehab program. So it's been a long time. So I think we're like 18 years in of, of a 20-year, of a 20-year loan forgiveness. And, and so there's not many left in the program that are still repaying us because those houses have sold and then all of that stuff is taken care of on, upon a sale. But yeah, so it's been a significant amount of time. And so it is, it's a very promising project.
Can I add one more thing? I am supportive, obviously, of the Resource Center. And I, I've heard the idea of using block, community development block grants to purchase the building.
I can speak to that.
In the past, Councilwoman Lukeye, speak to that.
You know, I mean, okay, really quick to back up really. So three of the things that are within the housing rehab proposal is low interest rates, which are for people who are not necessarily as disadvantaged as maybe some other people who would be eligible for grants or forgivable loan. But one of the things that we can offer is the loan committee, which is separate from the city council, would establish an interest rate that's maybe more competitive than, say, a bank rate. But the benefit to the city and to the residents on that low interest rate loan is that those loan payments go back into what's called C D B G P I income, which is programmatic income. And so that P I income is, is basically a guaranteed fund for the city to use as long as it qualifies for C D B G funding. So for neighborhood facility designations like the Community Resource Center, for the library building, things like that, those would then be able to be adjusted through that P I income. So I'm not sure we do have any real P I income anymore because we're at the end of the 20-year cycle. Excuse me, I have it here in my mouth. We're at the end of the 20-year cycle, so most people have paid off their loans. So we're really not getting that programmatic income anymore, which is actually more flexible dollars than this. So this is a competitive grant. We applied last year for these two projects and we did not get chosen. So that's one thing to note that I don't think we've brought up yet. And so we're reapplying to try and get those. But one of the benefits of that $545,000 is that with interest on those particular cases would be generating income for the city to use for community development-based programs in the future. So that, that is one advantage to that type of program if the council sees fit to move forward with that program. But on the topic of the Community Resource Center, yes, they did use C D B G. They actually used a loan and a grant to purchase their Wyrica facility, which they actually just paid off their grant, their loan, I believe, last year. They were making double payments on it. And essentially what, so what I've been trying to do for the Community Resource Center is figure out the mechanism of how they did that. Obviously, they did it. I believe they had a 35-year C D B I believe they had a 35 year CDBG loan to purchase it. So it's way back in the ether. And so it's been interesting to get public records from the county as well, especially when some of those records burned last year because there was an arson at a building, which is a whole fun thing. So there is an ability to do a purchase. And so how they did that was actually the county was the applicant for the grant and loan and essentially helped finance that for the Community Resource Center, which was then in a, essentially in a agreement with the county to pay the county's loan, if that makes sense. So that's, I'm trying to get those documents to be able to replicate that for us and especially having a community a a community based organization like the Community Resource Center that has a history of actually paying off their other loan. It actually gives them a good competitive advantage to get that program again for our community. So it's been in the background. I've been slowly working on it. But again, it, we don't have longevity here. We don't have people who worked on it available to kind of talk to. So it's been a lot digging through the archives for the county for that. But it is, it is an eligible CDBG project. It is something that we're working on. The grant they got in addition to the loan did repairs to the building, essentially similar to what Sam's experiencing. When they purchased that building, it was dilapidated and they they got an additional grant through the city of Wyrica to do improvements on that facility after they purchased it. So that's the story there. It's something we're looking to do for the facility here. We just haven't, you know, gotten the necessary traction and background to be able to do it successfully. So that's the, that's the long form of that.
And I wanted to update you. Great Northern still has a weatherization program. It's very limited compared to what it was in during COVID times. So we do have a very long list. So if anybody does want weatherization and they income qualify, which is a completely different program and completely different income qualifications, like Juliana said, it is a grant program and it's much easier to apply for. It's just you have to apply for it every year. And we do that in association with the Energy Assistance Program through the LIHE program.
Thank you for the correction. I'm glad it's still there. It's a good program.
It's still there and we still do food as well.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Do you require a necessary action? Okay. Yeah.
Anything else? All right, with that, public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number 10, old business. Consider approval of placing delinquent utility accounts and abatement recovery on tax assessments.
It's your name.
Yeah, my name's on this thing.
Finance.
All right, so you got in front of you the opportunity for the city to collect on outstanding utility accounts. So what we're being asked is for city council to authorize all these utility accounts that are very past due, they're more than years past due. What we can, what we can do is place them on the tax rolls. So then the county will then be responsible for collecting these bills. So there's a list of utility bills in the agenda packet. In addition to this utility bill, there is one, we're calling it an outstanding abatement invoice. And so that's also listed in your agenda packet. And so we think it's a really good idea for staff. It's another great way for us to collect on these outstanding balances. Just for everybody's knowledge, we try and do a shut off policy. We have no late fees on our utility accounts. I try and make this very clear to everybody when they come in and ask. So no late fees on your utility bill. But we do adhere very strictly to the shut off policy, which is a 60 day delinquency period. I can go into all the details if you have specific questions, but water gets shut off, that usually brings people in. So the fact that these are very, very old accounts that haven't been paid in years, I just want to make it clear that it's not like if you're sitting out there worried that it's going to go to your tax roll, we just come talk to me and we will be happy to assess the situation and hopefully will not have to go to tax rule assessment.
It is, uh, these are identified counts are past due greater than two years.
Any questions? All right, that'll open this up to public comment. Please limit any public comment to this item. You'll have three minutes, 30 second warning. That'll open it up for public comment.
Alan Magonya, 4116 Pines Street. I just want to tie this into it. I don't know how it might, but the fact that I see people walking out of the theater and going to the faucet and doing some weird wrenching situation and completely destroying the water fountain, that I go tell people there's really nice water right there. And then they go up there and they're like, oh, uh, looks like the water faucet just literally was taken apart. And then I walk up there to go get stuff from the brewery and I noticed a gentleman who is always walking in and out of the theater going like this with. And I'm like, so this is the reason why the water fountain is broke? You guys don't have any water in there, I'm assuming. And then come out here and just, and then break it. And then at that point, it's not a functioning water fountain for our awesome community. So I don't know how that might tie in with that, but I hope that there's something to do with that roundabout way where maybe there isn't any water in that building and that's why they're going to get water. And when I close my shop at like 10, 10:30, they're always out there just monkey wrenching. I'm just like, can we not do this and have a functioning water fountain? So at that point, I don't know if that segues into what they were saying, but I would like to just, you know, put that together if I may. Thank you.
Before we move on to the next item of public comment, I'll just do a clarification on that. Reason that water fountain has not been working is that it has been repeatedly vandalized and that every single time it has been fixed, it has been broken again completely.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the information. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the information. Now I'll, I'll, I'll follow up with you on that. Thank you.
Again, I just want to reiterate, a lien is ownership. What does this council plan on doing with the ownership of these buildings? That's the question. It is ownership if you haven't paid. The other thing I do is it says that once a year after this goes into effect, once a year, the city manager is going to notify what further goes on that. I think that requires not the city manager to do it. I would prefer to see the finance director be able to make that that this is job. I think the city manager's got enough to do. I don't think it should be written in that the, once a year, the city manager is going to go determine what ones go on, on the list and which ones don't. That would be the comment. But again, what are you going to do with the buildings after you own them?
We, we had a request to revive church to help somebody with their water bill. But you have to pay all of your water bills in arrears to get your water back on, is that right? So there were three months behind or something. And we couldn't negotiate, can we get a month and a month to try to help them catch up? So that might end up with a nonpayment altogether. So it would be interesting to consider, can we do something? It turned out in that case, it was a continued abuser of the system. So I was like, cool, I'm down, I'm out of here. But I just don't know how often that comes up. Whether we can reinstate somebody's services with partial payment.
Just want to comment on Alan, sorry, Kevin Tinsky, 5945 Dunsmere Avenue. I just had the thought while I heard Alan talking about that they're trying to help somebody get caught up on. It's, it shouldn't be more than two months in arrears after you get shut off, right? So to say two months. If there is a situation where somebody is in need and deserving, you know, maybe it could be done something like what Pacific Power has done. I remember three, four years ago, I was out of work, no, it's been almost five years. I was out of work and I had a hard time paying my power bill. So they took that that past due amount and they broke it up into 12 installments and they just added that on to my, my regular monthly bill. And, you know, just maybe there's some kind of way that, you know, something could be negotiated in a future case like that, Alan. It's just, just the thought I had. So anyways, that's my two cents. Thanks.
So to address a couple of those comments, so it's a tax assessment, not a lien, so it works slightly differently. We, we get prioritized above all liens in the event that the property sells. So even if the liens don't get satisfied, we get satisfied. Works in the same process. As for the comments associated with payment or payments, we do offer that. But if they are a chronic abuser, then, you know, you fail once and we, we, we learned our lesson. And so we do offer payment plans in the event that somebody is in, you know, having troubles making payments. But if, if that is a continuous problem, then the payment plan goes away and and your water gets shut off. And unfortunately, there's a consistent number of the same people who just do it every month, so.
We just the exact motion, confirm the list of delinquent utility counts and abatement recovery invoice and approve the proposed resolution.
It's on page 29.
Yeah, there it is. Okay. To adopt resolution 202512, confirming and approving the utility bill delinquency list and direct staff to submit the list to the county audit board controller for inclusion on the property tax roll.
Oh, second.
I'll do a roll call because it does.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor Clarno to steal those words. All right, we'll start over here. Councilmember Ryan.
Hi.
Councilwoman Lukasey.
Hi.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
Hi.
Mayor Clarno.
Move on to number 11, new business. Start with operate staff, use the limited budget effective July 1st, 2025.
You get that.
You're the one that put your name on it, not me.
Rocking this meeting tonight. All right, loving all the finance stuff. So we, of course, strive to get the budget adopted as of July 1. Fiscal year is 7-1 to 630. I could not get my stuff together, so it's going to be late. I couldn't get it to you guys, unfortunately. So we're just asking this council to basically allow staff to spend dollars on 7-1. And so what I've written here is essentially the operational costs from what we discussed at Finance Committee for the 25, 26 fiscal year. So that is what I would be proposing to you all. You can question as you need. But essentially, it's so that we can continue operational expenditures on 7-1, 2025.
Also, just a second, you know, late responsibility for not having a budget. But I would also just like to find out that is also Finance Committee as well. This is where we, the city operates on a two year budget cycle. So we only do a budget every two years, it covers those two years. There are a lot of big projects, potential big impacts for the city finances, big changes, things that are up in the air. And as the Finance Committee, we also just wanted to make sure that we give the best accurate budget out. And so therefore, we shouldn't be spending a lot of emissions coming back and forth. And that's another reason why budget alone be ready by 7-1. It's just we, we don't feel like it's quite there yet also. And then just, we'd also like to think, like, roll for, yes, the budget, I know, community harmony, the audit and the budget and everything else all happening right around the same time. So with that, though, go into any questions?
I have a question. How much more time do you need?
Finance Committee has a recommendation on that.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait.
Finance Committee, we also, the Finance Committee motioned and adopted a recommendation to have it by council by August 7th, 7th, yes.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, and it has been difficult capacity wise. Having a two year budget has a lot of advantages. We have a whole year where we don't do this more in depth exercise and that frees up a lot of capacity. But it does mean we really need to commit to getting it right because this document has a lot of influence over Dunsmere's next two years. And to put it in context, we're looking at approximately $600,000 deficit for each year of this two year budget cycle. And that equals approximately our reserves. So that does include working on the Public Works Building. It includes some expected increases from certain areas of expense.
Does that anticipate the loss of the sales tax?
That anticipates the loss of a sales tax that will expire on March 25th. Or no, yeah.
Yeah.
March 25th. So it anticipates a lot of negative things that may or may not happen. It also anticipates some positive things conservatively. You know, we've certainly factored in the increase in the TOT, but the trend line has actually been falling from a year before when we reached max capacity, we think because of some of the utility, sorry, the infrastructure upgrades were going on with projects around town. So I would say it's, it's safe to say that it's quite likely, especially if we as a community choose that we want to renew this tax. It was originally passed, among other things, to support the library and the pool and all general fund expenditures. If that happens, that'll certainly put us in a much better footing. And if our TOT comes in where I think one could reasonably expect it to, but you don't want to project that far in the future, we, we could definitely close that gap quite a bit to where our deficit may still be 300,000, 400,000, but that money might actually be going into capital improvement, assets that are going to be lasting, you know, for 20, 30, hopefully 60, 70 years in the case of our Public Works Building. So it's that complication that's actually led to us really wanting to kind of get to the bottom of things. I think there's two main items that have yet to be kind of worked out numbers wise. And then discussing kind of what the many options might be. If we pass the tax as a community, the world looks very different than if we don't, but we'll have to be prepared for both. So that's kind of been the conversations at Finance Committee. We were hoping to get it done in time, but it was actually the Finance Committee that recommended, rather than bringing it to council this day, let's wait and really have a document that we can live by for the next two years.
Any other questions? All right, before we get into public comment, I just want to find out one clarifying question. Well, I'd like to just see if we can get an answer now. And that is library. We do have some money in the proposed budget that was looked at Finance Committee for the library for the coming years.
Correct.
Been stated earlier, they have some funding crunches and tightness coming up. Would this cover a month or quarters or? Well, I believe the suggestion from Finance Committee was to have this extension go through that recommended or that date that we set for ourselves to give to get the budget done. So basically, this effective July 1st would only cover, our recommendation was to not have this be indefinite, but only have this basically be a stopgap until the budget comes up. So would we be looking at giving the library the amount that's in the budget divided by that 90 days roughly? I know it's not quite 90 days, but it's.
The beauty of council is you guys get to decide. Which.
I knew that was coming back.
I have a some thought on it, but there'll be after public comment.
Okay, well, I just wanted to get that out there, that that is potentially something that we have considered and have thought about just to get some money for July. And there will be discussion on that point. So with that, we'll go into public comment. Three minutes, 30 seconds. Please limit public comment to this particular item. However, I do understand that this particular item is the city budget, which covers almost everything. So so three minutes, 30 second warning. We're going to stop for public comment.
Still Kevin Tinsky, still 5945 Dunsmere Avenue. So I just wanted to speak about the library portion of the budget and just give you an idea. I'm sure Tim has already told you, but we are in a, in an immediate crunch. We, if we don't get some check early July, I don't know if the seventh will cut it. We we will have to close the library for two weeks because we won't be able to cover payroll. And that's just the kind of margins we've been operating on, you know. We've, we've been going through a similar process coming up with the budget and like you, we've been trying to be conservatively optimistic about what we might be able to get from things. For instance, we've got online donations now. You can go to the Friends of the Dunsmere Library website and make a donation. That's new. Tell Stacy, thanks again for that. So that, you know, we're we're hoping maybe we'll get a thousand, hopefully more, but we've we've set that number at a thousand dollars. We're gonna do our best to participate in the Giving Tuesday this year. So, you know, we're hoping we'll get a little bit of money from that, you know. But with the 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 number I heard that you might have a sketched in for is twenty five thousand dollars for for the year. With our best estimates and even just doing everything we are with our fundraising, we come up with about forty five percent of the funding for the library. You're, the city is directly responsible for fifty five percent. And forty five percent is all the other sources we have, the online donations, the Libris book sales and, you know, people just donating to the library. So we are, you know, that's that, that's about it. You guys are responsible for fifty five percent of that and we come up with the other forty five percent. So even with our hoping we can get a little bit money, more money this year than we did last year on our own. We're still going to be coming up about six thousand dollars short. The number we have is is thirty one thousand dollars or just under thirty one thousand dollars. And Tim Holt here, he's got, he's got those numbers and he can explain them to you better than I can. I was just giving you a rough figure of what we're looking at. So it's, you know, even if things, if things don't change from where they are right now, then then we're still going to be in a situation where we're going to always be two weeks away from having to close down and and it could be at just some of the worst times of the year, you know, we got so many people in town. We don't want them to know our library is shuttered, you know, that you can't go in there today, sorry. Because that sucks, you know, I send a lot of, I'm working at the hardware store, send a lot of people to the library for all kinds of things, getting copies, you know, anyway. We need that library to stay open. We don't want it to shut down and we're hoping to, you know, if you guys can somehow work it out and we're going to try to, maybe we can do more than than we were hoping, but still thirty one thousand dollars. That's that's just what it's going to cost to keep the library open and, you know, we're we're close, you know. Okay, so thirty seconds.
I forgot to give the thirty second warning.
Can I fifteen seconds?
I'll give you ten.
Ten seconds. Okay. Dunsmere Railroad Dayso Box Derby is a big hit. I want to thank all the guys at the at the city public works for for helping me make that happen. It was fun and it was safe and we're going to do it again next year and donate to the library, please.
Before you go, there is a clarifying.
I do have a clarifying question. So it can be answered by either of you if you want. So just really quick, the 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 library is a Siskiyou County Library. It's a Siskiyou County branch. And so my clarifying question is, is have you gone to the Board of Supervisors to ask for additional funding from the county for a county library?
The answer is not recently. I spent some time with the Finance Committee of the county some years ago and testified before the Board of Supervisors. This is after they slashed funding, you know, for all the branch libraries and tried to get them to, you know, reinstate some of that money and I got pretty much nowhere. We have been getting anywhere. Each branch library now is getting a payment, an annual payment of anywhere between five hundred and a thousand dollars. That's what the county's contribution has been.
So you have not been to the county yet to ask.
Not lately, no.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think, you know, to be honest with you, I I really don't think it would do much good. You never know, I guess. So just to, Tim Holt. Yeah, real quick. Well, it's not going to be three minutes, I guarantee you. But just to sum up, we're hoping that city can find six thousand dollars more in its budget for the next fiscal year. I am encouraged, and I think Kevin is also, that we just saw some discussion, a little bit of back and forth about how you might be able to get a check. Basically, it would be a quarterly payment, I assume, to the library so that we don't have to do this temporary shutdown. So to sum up, we get six thousand dollars more in addition to the twenty five thousand you have in the budget now. We get the quarterly payment in the early part of July. It is our best estimate the library will stay open during the next fiscal year with the same twenty hours a week that we're open now. Thank you.
Alan Magonya, four one one six Pine Street. Forgive my naivety and Finance Committee, but I was wondering if there's any possible way to allocate some of the general fund cannabis tax revenue that I, you know, pay as a cannabis revenue. I don't know if it goes into the general fund or not. So at that point, I don't know how that might happen through Finance Committees to within that I was hoping that my business is going to do anywhere from two hundred and fifty thousand to half a million dollars this year. And at that point, a four percent quarterly tax. I think there could be some way to facilitate helping the library and if I may, the city, if I was allowed to do onsite consumption, I'd be closer to more like half a million to a million dollars if it was. So I hope that for the next projected year, I'd be able to have the onsite consumption be part of the business revenue that generates tax for the general fund. So then maybe we can allocate a little bit more and this year I am projected to hit my goal of between two hundred and fifty and a half a million. So I hope that next year, if I get my licensing and you guys approve me for the conditional use permit that I will be able to double and maybe quadruple that if onsite consumption. So I just want to reiterate that there's a tax revenue that could be coming down. That would definitely be advantageous to everything. So I just appreciate you guys and your time.
My thought on the matter of the library is whether you guys would consider penciling in thirty one thousand dollars, making their first quarterly and second quarterly payment based on that and then reevaluating based on what its tax measure goes through. And the reality that we need to retool how we're going to fund the library for the following fiscal year because currently we have no budget for it for the next year. So it seems like we could get started because that's what we're going to do anyway. Let's get started and see where we're at in six months.
Sure. Yeah, so this kind of comes from reviewing it at Finance Committee yesterday. Taking, I'll do the library issue second because I do think it'd be reasonable to do that. I'm proposing we don't use the preliminary operational budget because I don't feel as if it's transparent and it feels as if we're adopting it without adopting it. I would opt to using the two thousand twenty five or twenty four twenty five budget cycle year for our budget. And that way it'll keep the increases low. I realize there might be some inconvenience to it, but it's a consequence of us not being able to do this on time. I'm just not altogether in favor of using the budget that could change pretty drastically. You know, the the document you reference here changes daily and I don't want to authorize something that's not firm. So the other budget's published, it's everywhere. I'm I'm more in favor of that. I I guess I would want to just ask staff how we would handle one time purchases in the last budget. Obviously, we're not going to authorize those. But those won't be, they'll be authorized in this action if we do it, but they won't be spent unless there's a need.
Right. Keep, keep going.
Or any kind of infrastructure spending.
Yeah. So honestly, so there's, there's only one item I can think of off the top of my head is is that we had a scheduled new snowplow and we need to have that ordered like next week, Tuesday, in order to have it by fall. And so that's the only item, but we do have it in the budget enough to should be close to covering that cost in the snow budget. Secondly, to address the infrastructure issue, I'm, if we're planning to bring it forward on August seventh, I'm not as concerned about that because right now we're kind of in that limbo where the state hasn't paid us back yet anyway. And so some of those payments are not going out for infrastructure, but I believe we budgeted a pretty significant amount. And even if it's not, it it'll just get amended in the, once the budget's adopted. So really, the only, the the stuff outside of, you know, payroll, which we address a portion of that on this next one. The others is already addressed in the Union M O U and just, you know, paying the utility bills, you know, our bills, et cetera. The, I think it's just a sewer project potentially that would have any outgoing costs that was potentially would be outside of the scope of what last year's budget was. And that's just because we have a bunch of pending. They're in process of working, so there's a bunch of pending stuff coming through. So other than those two, I I'm absolutely okay with adopting last year's budget. If we could have those exceptions.
If you need something for the sewer, you could always bring it to consent agenda on the seventeenth.
Yeah, and I'll have to, I have to look at last year's budget, but I believe we had, did we have like a million in there? Yeah, we had like a million dollars in there for that. So we should be okay between now and August. So we can, we'll we'll evaluate that if we need to.
Okay.
I mean, we only have, it's only two council meetings away. So if it doesn't happen between now and the seventeenth, then it'll be on that council meeting regardless.
Particular adjustment number wise for the snowplow?
Well, I think it's budgeted at like thirteen or I think the number in the budget was like between ten and twelve thousand, but I think we need like sixteen thousand to be safe.
Okay.
So it's it's a minor adjustment. It it would fall underneath the scope of all the rest of snow because we're not plowing snow. So the total department budget would be way above and beyond what that expenditure would be.
Okay, so then I'm going to move that we authorize staff to use past year two thousand twenty four twenty five budget year numbers effective July first, two thousand twenty five until August seventh. Or I guess I'll say through August seventh. With the addition of sixteen thousand dollars allocated for the purchase of a new snowplow and seven thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollars represented a quarter of thirty one thousand paid to the library in early July.
So, well, is there a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay, part of the vote I'll discuss. I'll I'll keep yelling into it. So I just had a question on the, I don't have a motion on the the question at hand. I just had a question on the suggested motion that if I if I removed operational only preliminary budget numbers, if that would essentially be the proposed budget that the Finance Committee is working on and authorize the utilization of that until August thirty first, twenty twenty five, it would include the twenty five thousand allocation to the library. So if you just allow staff to utilize the preliminary budget that's been discussed until the end of August and then essentially you don't have to do any of these amendments or tweaks, you put the library in there and the snowplow, for example, like it's just, it seems like it's a little bit of a cleaner motion, but.
But the budget is changing daily, so it's kind of not a fixed allocation, whereas the last budget is.
So in the, in the last budget, I mean, so what happened in this budget, this is, some will get into it when when we come to the council for a discussion. We separated the library out from community promotions this year and put it into its own department. So that's what, that's what's making the difference. So last year it was, fell under the community promotions budget line item.
No, I understand that. What what I'm just asking a question about is that wouldn't it just be easier to approve your most recent preliminary budget from Finance Committee until the end of August, until we confirm a formal budget?
I think that's why staff recommended that. I have the issue.
Operational only, like just actually just your budget that you have proposed, that needs to be adjusted a little bit more, but it at least approves through August thirty first.
I don't like to adopt it while it's not, I I like the fact that last one was adopted by council. We know what it was.
I I get that, but we.
We've done this. This is the third time we've done it. We've always just continued last year's budget into this year. We've never done it this way, so.
But you have other people who are contingent in other purchases, but.
That's why I have.
I just, I personally don't like approving this without an actual budget in front of me in the packet for other people to understand what's being approved.
That's precisely why I want to use one that has been vetted by the community council.
With amendments.
With two amendments.
Okay.
And the library does have some funding from last year's budget, so we could just stick with that. It'd be a quarter.
The funding doesn't roll over year to year fiscally.
If we use the numbers from last year, it'd be a quarter, they would get a quarter if it were quarterly payment, which is.
A quarter of twenty five.
Has been that, it'd be a quarter of twenty five thousand. I think it's twenty two.
Or was it twenty?
I don't know, I was trying to look it up quickly.
Anyway, it would be there, but. All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved inside of and this.
Who is the second?
Sebring.
Sarah, you're a I think you've gotten all the seconds. Man, fantastic. All right. Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Hi.
Councilmember Lukeyzie.
No.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
I.
Mayor Plarno. Passes four one. Clarify, right? Well, I want to clarify. Use twenty four twenty five budget, seven one to eight seven, sixteen thousand for a snowplow, one quarter of thirty one thousand.
Yes.
For the library. Got it. Thank you.
The the confusion is why I voted no. I would like, I think, I could request that we do have any other discussion that we have the actual thing in the agenda packet just so that was publicly aware that I'm aware of that at the time. I mean, I can go look at the last year budget, which is fine, but I didn't know you were going to make that motion. Right? So I don't have things in front of me just to essentially give a per yes if this is going to be okay.
Fair enough.
I totally understand that.
Fair enough.
And respect it. For that, we're on to item letter B. Consider approval of non-union staff cost of living adjustment.
All right, Mayor and Council, so in front of you is a resolution authorizing the non-union cost of living adjustment that is equal to the cost of living adjustment associated with the union employees that goes into effect on July one of every year. The adjusted pay schedule is on page thirty seven and I believe it was two point five percent like, correct, or two points? Yes, two point five percent cost of living increase. Open for any questions.
I have a question. Thank you. So first, specifically for the hazard mitigation planner costs here, how does that line up with the jumpstart grants since that position is wholly funded out of that? Are we still within the parameters that we have out of the grant?
Yeah, so we, he has a negotiated salary rate increase throughout the full grant cycle. And so that's, should be how that's included in there.
Okay, so we would be not allocating any additional funding to pay for his position outside of that grant.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And and we will have actually a little additional because the original budget was for a full five years and he was started like month seven of the of the grant cycle already. So we're a little bit behind. So we did reallocate that during negotiations. So we're okay.
Cool. Any other questions? All right, see none. I'll open this up to public comment. Three minutes, thirty seconds. Please limit public comment to this particular item. Uh, we'll do individuals in the room first, followed by those on Zoom. Remember that. I will open this up to public comment.
I haven't been here for a while, been busy, busy, you know. Debbie Spagnolo, I live at four one twenty Eath in Dunsmere for the last almost forty years. I've come to every meeting last year and I missed some this year and I want to know why I'm not on the agenda. So today I called a commendation, um, Doug, I can never say his name, the Malphite. And asked him to come and check things out and see what's going on. It is my issues still needs to be addressed. There's a lot of things I found out differently than what I was told. And then what happened.
Debbie, just, this is for this particular item. So the comment has to be limited to this particular item. We've already done general, we did general public comment already. Okay. Right, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment. All right, uh, and with that, we'll move on to council discussion.
All right.
Oh, sure. Motion to approve.
All right, there's a second.
I'll second.
Just train going. You guys put the pressure on.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a roll call vote for this item?
And just to clarify, you want to do the motion that's on the piece of paper?
Yes.
Oh, the full motion, sure. Motion to approve the non-union pay resolution for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six fiscal year.
I do have a question about how this relates to the budget implementation.
Yes.
Because I I wouldn't want a case where union employees aren't getting this increase because it wasn't budgeted, we don't budget that.
There, there's, the union employees are under contract through twenty twenty six, so. The, we don't have an issue with the adoption of the budget because we will not go past the the salary, the total salary amount in any allocation in one month. And so there there's no amendment required until later. Mayor Flarno.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Sebring.
I.
Council member Brian.
Hi.
Council member Luke Casey.
I.
Council member Hubbard.
I.
Passes five oh.
Asked, future agenda items.
I would like to thank all of our uh, non-union employees.
Thank you. They do all the work.
All right, future agenda items.
So outside of the list that's already in the agenda, I think the only other one I have is uh, Cosmon is coming back for an update. We've made a lot of progress over the last uh. Couple months and so they'll be back um, and then obviously the budget needs to be on there. And then uh, I can't think of anything else right now.
Um, so.
Oh, the tax measure.
Yes, that's important. Through the chair, um, I'd like to request a future agenda item on a a future city council meeting to discuss the internal policy on uh, project creation. And project initiation for private projects, um specifically to develop a policy related to tracking when we do have interested individuals who are doing projects. For example, using either a pre-application meeting or some kind of way that we're tracking that interest. Um, and so I'd I'd like to see a policy document, a draft policy document come before council to discuss that.
I second that.
And I'd also like to at least see something on the agenda saying that we are like coming back to the creek issue, just like an update. So that people don't think that we're forgetting about it.
Good.
And also Al's um onsite consumption, because he has been working on that for a while.
Oh, I I apologize, that was supposed to be on there, that one missed it. Sorry.
Start, anything else?
I'll second.
You're damn seconding, sir, you're at the meeting, meeting a jerk.
Thanks, David, and have a good.
Thanks, good night, everyone.